Our police administrator, Kim LaFleur, our operations director, and of course, Brian Wissinger from his bed. Yes, right, Brian? So I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is a land use staffing request. Todd, could you lead us through that?
Sure, as my note indicated, when Jeff Board retired, we posted his job, hoping to get someone of his caliber. We were unsuccessful in that. We had five candidates. Three were heavy in soil scientists and two had no managerial experience whatsoever. They didn't really fit the criteria, certainly wouldn't fill Jeff's shoes. So after that experience, we went back and looked at what are the needs of the land use department? Looking at it, every function there is kind of their own silo in a lot of ways. Now they all work together, but the greatest need we found was administrative, really somebody to be at the counter and also somebody to administer our GIS system and also take up the slack on the stormwater permit, which we're behind frankly. So we rewrote the job description and posted that job. Of that, we got 41 candidates, boiled that down to 17, conducted phone interviews on those 17, and then boiled those down to, I think it was six or seven.
Yeah.
Conducted in-person interviews of those. And of those who took the two finalists and had final interviews, and the winning candidate, we believe, is Matthew Putnam. Matthew has a degree in GIS. He also worked for the city of Milton in the planning department in Florida. He's prior service, he's retired now, but he was an Army Ranger first, and he was injured. He became an Army Ranger, he did five years in the Army. He was excellent in the interviews, very calm, very, kind of a lot like Jeff really, without any experience, but nothing seemed to faze him. I suppose being in Afghanistan for five years, you know, anything here is not going to faze you. We really feel that he will be a good fit for the department and really what it needs for the administrative side frankly. And we looked at what's going on in the next few years, and there's not a whole lot likely to come up. And anything that does, we're looking at vending out the engineering services or land service that Jeff used to provide, and Jeff is doing actually on a part-time basis now. But it's been very quiet for a while, and it seems like that's going to continue for quite some time.
Personally, I thought he was one of the strongest candidates that I have viewed in my experience. A very calm individual, headed altogether, newly married, getting his master's degree. Just a solid, solid individual, three tours of duty in Afghanistan, I can't imagine. He really had his whole focus and attention in terms of what he wants to do. This is a starting job for him. I think we'd be fortunate to have somebody of his caliber, and he's got growth potential also.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the hiring of Matthew Putnam as the land use technician. And I'd also like to commend Todd Rowland for the process you went through in your write-up. I thought was pretty impressive, the level of detail you provided. A couple of questions I have is where does he live?
Weetou, which is...
And what is his accent to the office?
What did he say, about 35 minutes?
Yes.
Oh, he had about a half hour.
Yeah, he's up towards Suffield, is that where it is?
Simsbury.
Simsbury, I'm sorry, that's correct. He has just newly relocated here from Florida, I think.
Yeah.
And I think based upon his involvement here, he may decide to move closer. But at this stage of the game, I don't think it's an issue in terms of his commute.
Yeah.
And what kind of cost do we anticipate for the town? Regardless of $20 an hour and plus benefits?
Tim, let me just second your motion so we can make this an official discussion. So I'll second the motion and the recognition of Todd's effort.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, additional discussion, Tim?
Yeah, what's his salary? How does that relate to cost to the town on an annual basis?
I think it's in the $50,000 range based upon his number of hours that he would work. I think the benefits, Brian can jump in here, I think it's in the neighborhood around 40%. Is that correct, Brian? 40, 45%?
Yeah, depending on what package he ends up going with. You said he was newly married and so forth. Yeah, it would be in the 35 to 45% range. His salary is much lower than Jeff Board's though, so in this year, we should recognize savings and see a reduction in cost for FY '22 budget as well.
The only asterisk with that is we're, the difference in Jeff's salary, we're going to keep some of that for contracting out engineering services as needed.
Right, we already have a line item in land use for professional services, so I could see that growing a little bit next year. But we will still see some decrease there.
I estimate you're looking at a net savings of around $40,000 to $50,000. We have not really exercised our option with J.R. Russo in terms of outsourcing some technical engineering help. Jeff has been very good in terms of stepping up as we've needed him, but that's been minimal.
Very good.
So, any additional questions from Tim or Tim?
No.
Okay. So, we're going to, want to vote?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes, thank you. Todd, what is his effective start date?
We haven't determined that yet, and it was pending the outcome of this meeting. I will contact him tomorrow and find out when he would like to start. My sense is sooner the better, so it's going to be more on our end to get all his stuffs in a row. He's got to get fingerprinted. We got to get a ticket, so probably not Monday, but maybe a week from Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. And my compliments also, Todd, for your assistance in terms of this analysis and also the interviewing process.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, I'll give it to you tomorrow and flesh out the details.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Todd. The next item on the agenda is the highway construction project fees. And we have Kim Lydic and also Trooper First Class Heavy to go through that. I think you, both you gentlemen, received the information that was sent out by both Trooper Heavy and by Kim Lydic. So Kim, or Mike?
Please, I'm sure Mike.
So you want to go or do you want me to? Either way works.
It doesn't matter, whatever you want.
I'll get you with a mask.
I can go with the mask if people can understand me.
Yeah.
So, Mike Heavy and I were looking at the highway construction projects that our town officers work. The majority of them are in Summers. There's a few that do go over to Stafford when they can't fill their jobs. The rate that the town charges the vendors or the contractors has not changed since the spring of 2016. So it is still stagnant at $75. $25 of that hourly rate goes to the town of Summers, and $50 goes to the officer that's working the job, the extra duty job. We projected out from the surrounding towns on the second page, if everybody has the attachment, what they are, they currently charge in 2020. So these aren't even projecting out the three years that we did the rates and come up with an average of the surrounding towns. And they are charging an average of $96.64 an hour. $31.07 goes to the town they work for, and $65.57 goes to the officer working the overtime job. So we're basically looking to get our rates that the town charges in line with the surrounding towns. We'll basically be at or slightly below that average number of the surrounding towns in three years, which at that time, we'd look to reevaluate again. I don't know if anybody has any questions from that, or...
I'd make a motion that we increase the pay rate for town police services from $75 an hour to $87 an hour effective January 1st, 2021.
Second the motion?
Okay.
Tim, would you amend that for the other, the additional years as Kim and Trooper Heavy presented?
That was for a three-year period?
No, first year.
That's what I thought, for one year.
Yeah, the first year would go up to $87 an hour. $60 would go to the officer, $27 an hour would return to the town of Summers.
And it's your project fees for highway construction projects?
Correct, correct. And then the continuous proposal is, you know, for the next two years after January 2021, it would go up an additional $2 for the officer and for the town, ultimately getting us to $95 an hour where we charge the vendors. $31 would go to the town, $64 to the officer. So it's an incremental increase. You know, the first year was a little higher.
I amend that motion as proposed.
Okay.
I'll amend my second accordingly.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
And more of a question for Brian than for anybody else. But Brian, I know annually, we look at some of the fees that we charge for, you know, restaurant inspections and that type of thing. Should this be on that schedule so we don't fall behind the curve again?
That would be...
You know, it wouldn't be a bad idea, Tim, to have it on that list. The list that we get for those is, that comes straight from the Sanitarian.
Yep.
But yeah, it wouldn't be a bad idea, you know, with, the way it was proposed, we're doing it January, you know, each year. We're running on a calendar year, so I would say maybe for this one, we let it ride until we get to that third year, and then at budget time, we look at, you know, like you're saying, rolling, looking at it at budget time and checking the fee structure.
Great, yeah, just so it doesn't stagnate again. It seems like...
Yep.
The same thing also applies, Tim. We're going to look at the fees at the town transfer station also. So I think we'll look at that as we proceed on the budget.
Yeah, part of the reason why we did ours annually is, you know, the construction jobs are normally less, if not very minimal, or none in the winter.
Yeah.
So it's easier for us to notify the companies, come the spring jobs and everything starts getting going versus giving them the hike in the summer.
Yeah, it works too.
Thank you, Kim, thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Kim.
What'd you say, Mike, I'm sorry.
So thank you, Kim, she did the presentation for me, so I was...
All right.
Bud, I think we need a vote on the motion, Bud.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Tim. The next item is boards and commissions. You gentlemen have received the current updated list of the current vacancies, also the recommendations in terms of re-upping some of the people that are currently on these boards, as well as additional 1, 2, 3, 4 new recommendations. I suggest that we go through this list, if everybody has it. And reappoint, reappoint as necessary, then we can discuss the new additions in terms of recommendations. Is that all right with both you gentlemen?
Good luck.
Okay. The first commission is the Commission for Seniors, Advisory Commission for Seniors. There currently is one vacancy. But more importantly, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 reappointments. Those would be Phyllis William, Steve Getman, Kathleen Tuohy, Arlene Henry, Joan Sizer, Pat Bicchetti, and Carol Sarantino. Those are up for reappointment as of December 22nd, 2020.
And they all agreed to serve.
And they have all agreed to reserve.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendations as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Any additional discussion?
I'd like to thank each of them for willing to serve again.
And I want to publicly acknowledge that also. And Kim, we'll make sure we send letters out to all three of those. All in favor?
Vacancies not being filled, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't, we don't have anybody unless somebody will make a recommendation. But as I mentioned, we're looking at strictly reappointing and adding new members as they've requested. But if anybody has additional recommendations for that one vacancy, I'd appreciate it. We've gotten some response from the note we put out on the Facebook page, asking for volunteers, which I think has helped. But in this case, we still have one vacancy, Tim, so I don't know if anybody has any suggestions or anybody listening to this.
Possibly, we could consider that at a future selectmen's meeting.
Of course, that's fine. All right, do we vote, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye for the Senior Advisory Committee. The next commission is the Assessment Board of Appeals. We have Bud Devlin, no, that's, we're okay there in all three cases. The next item would be the Building Code of Board of Appeals. We have two terms that are up, Dave Burkenshaw and Jeff Lipton.
I'm worried that's per statute, so...
Yes. So we need to reappoint both gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Dave Burkenshaw and Jeff Lipton. Second, for, what is it, a four-year term?
It's a five-year term.
Five-year, yeah.
Excuse me, it's a four-year term, I apologize.
That's four-year on my list, yeah.
Yeah, four-year term. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll send notes also.
Absolutely.
The next commission is the Cemetery Commission. One expiring term for Casey Beega. Needs to be reappointed, that's a four-year term.
Make a motion to approve the authorization for a four-year term for Casey Beega. That's it. Second?
Additional discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next page would be the Conservation Committee Alternate. We have one vacancy. And Lewis Keeney is up for reappointment.
He hasn't gone to any meeting.
He hasn't?
No, he's gone to one meeting only.
Yeah.
So we have two vacancies.
So if you don't want to reappoint them...
Yeah. Those are alternate appointments, so we'll have to look for additional recommendations, okay. COVID Recovery, one vacancy. This is part of the Long-Term Recovery Committee, Tim?
That's just ongoing.
We've got a, someone coming on board as a recreational assist, what's the title for the recreational assistant?
The Assistant Deputy Director of Recreation.
I recommend we, we TV recommended to fill that position.
Yeah, Maureen Purcell.
That's Maureen Purcell.
Thank you.
P-R-S-C-L-L. We'll reach out to her to fill that position. The next item, next commission is...
Want to vote on that or not? I'm going to ask her first.
Yeah.
Yeah, she starts on Monday, so I can talk to her then, okay?
I just need to be an obvious person to fill that position.
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay.
I'll talk to her on Monday.
Yeah, well, if she comes in and gets her paperwork squared away, we'll make that recommendation. I'm sure she'll serve. The next commission is the Cultural Commission. We have a letter from Dave Marty requesting that he be put on this commission. I think I sent that letter to both you gentlemen.
Yep. I'll make a motion to support Dave Marty for a position on the Cultural Commission to expire in three, two years. Second?
Additional discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We still have two vacancies there. And so again, we're reaching out to the citizens if they have anybody recommendations for this. We'd appreciate hearing from them.
Yeah, these people, they all want to serve as well. She called me today, so...
So we need to reappoint Gail Tischler, Beverly Guzman, Virginia Lockwood, and Ann Lovac, Chairman. Their terms are expiring, they have expired.
Yeah.
And they've all agreed to serve.
Yeah.
Make a motion to reappoint those, we should let four or five...
There'll be 1, 2, 3, 4, that's correct.
Second?
Any additional discussion, all in favor? Aye. Third page would be the Economic Development Commission. I received a letter from Jim Formica, I sent to both you gentlemen. He's requesting to be appointed.
And he is unaffiliated, by the way.
Yeah.
Yes.
The recommendation that we appoint Jim Formica to the Economic Development Commission.
Okay, additional discussion, all in favor? Aye. We still have one, actually two vacancies on the Economic Development Commission. So again, we've had some resignations, and if anybody has additional recommendations, please let us know. Also, we have a alternate vacancy. I'm just wondering whether or not Cynthia Mike may want to move up to be a full member of the Economic Development Commission.
I think she would. I think that's entirely appropriate, and she's been active as a alternate.
We'll reach out to her and...
I can do that.
Which means we'll have one vacancy left on Economic Development and one vacancy.
Can we, can we just appoint her tonight due to the fact that...
Yeah.
We can appoint her.
Absolutely.
I assume she'll accept. I mean, she's pretty willing to serve, I know, so...
We can do that.
Yeah, let's vote on that. I make a motion that we approve Cynthia Mike as a member of the Economic Development Commission. Second?
Okay, any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. So we'll reach out to...
I'll take care of it.
To CJ.
Yeah.
Okay. The next commission is the Emergency Preparedness Advisory Council. And I think we've talked about Ann Conoyer filling that vacancy.
I recommend, I make a motion to appoint Ann Conoyer to a vacancy on the Emergency Preparedness Advisory Council. Second?
Any additional discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Now, we have appointments too for Dan Thayer, Peter DeBrino, Bill Maher III, Karen Hawking, Chief John Roach, Trooper Mike Heavy, Todd Rowland, and Brian Seplow. I think they've all agreed to serve. They need to be reappointed.
Make a motion that those individuals be reappointed as members of the Emergency Preparedness Advisory Council. Second?
Additional discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a vacancy on the Ethics Committee, an affiliated voter. And so we need a recommendation there regarding, I think Bill Shapiro moved off that committee.
He did.
So that's where the vacancy was.
Yeah.
I'm going to reach out to...
Because you're not allowed to serve on any other committee if you're on that committee.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm going to reach out to, would Kathy Devlin be permitted to serve? She's on, no, apparently not on board of finish.
No, you can't be, you can't be on any other commissioner board.
Okay, so we'll have to reach out to somebody that may want to perform that duty. Okay. We also have a, two vacancies in the Ethics Committee Alternate. Same thing, so we have three vacancies total. Any recommendations from you gentlemen as to who would want to serve in this important committee?
I have none, they don't meet very often, do they?
No.
No, it's only when there is an issue, so it's very sporadic. All right, let me think about this, and I'll get back with some recommendations. The next commission would be the vacancy, one, two vacancies on the Housing Authority. I reached out to Dave Penny. He has not responded in terms of his recommendation. So again, we're looking for volunteers in that regard. I think one of those vacancies was because of a spider carry leaving town.
Yeah.
So we're looking for two, two recommendations in that regard. All right, we're on the fifth page. Open Space and Trails. Todd, are you still with us or not? Apparently not.
They all want to serve though, so...
Okay. We need to reappoint Eileen Bluen, Joan Sears, Ann Moses, Michael Bluen, Richard Bailey, Barbara Anderson, Patrice Carson, Wes Smith, Dick Cotton, Dominic Wilson, and Todd Rowland, our DPW Director.
Did you get Ann Moses?
She did.
Yes, Ann, she's in.
So I recommend, I recommend a motion that we approve the reauthorization for terms for those nine members as proposed. Second?
Okay, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Todd, you seem to be more involved in this commission. Any additional volunteers that you can recommend?
Actually, we have two that expressed interest. Our next meeting is not till April, which they will attend, and the committee will take up their nominating. If they nominate them, I'll bring it to the Ford's Black and Triple Federation.
Okay, good, that's good news. Mike, you still with us? He's not. The next commission is...
Still on board, yeah, he's still with us.
Okay, it's the Pension Committee. I've reached out to these gentlemen, and they prefer to keep the committee with the three members that are there, Bill Perpatrick, Ham Wilson, and John Mayall. I have attended each and every one of these meetings, and I find all three gentlemen to be competent, and they feel that they can handle this requirement without additional two fillings of their vacancies. Mike, are you still there, you want to...
Are they recommending we not fill the vacancies?
I'll let Mike comment on that too. Go ahead, Mike.
They've always felt that way, that they're, as a three-member committee, they didn't function best, so... There's nothing that says they can't do it that way.
Why don't we make it a three-member committee then? Why have five members?
That's a good point, I mean, I...
I think it says up to, maybe it's the charter wording, up to five, so...
Is Carl on the line, Carl Andalina?
No.
Okay.
I have to look that up.
Hold on.
Yeah, we could take that under advisement, Tim, if it's, if it makes sense to reduce it to three. If it's not in the charter, that has to be five. We can do that at the meeting, first January meeting, just reduce the size of the committee.
Okay.
Okay, I'll reach out to Carl and get an opinion based upon the charter.
Do we have a motion to reappoint the three nominated?
Yeah, yes, we have.
I'll make a motion to reappoint the three members, Phil Patrick, Wilson, and Mayall.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next commission gentleman is the Planning Commission. We have two reappointments. That would be Jim McFeet Jr. and Greg Genlot, the Chairman. And then we have one vacancy.
Make a motion, we reappoint Jim McFeet Jr. and Greg Genlot as members of the Planning Commission. Second?
Additional discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So again, we're still looking for a person to fill that vacancy slot. Also, we have three vacancies in the Planning Commission Alternates. Again, no recommendations at this point. The next commission is the Prison Liaison Safety Commission. I think the gentlemen received the opinion letter from Carl Andalina, which I'll read. Based on the information provided, this committee is not required under Connecticut General Statute 18-81H. The Public Safety Committee required under this statute is a state agency to which the first selectman is required to appoint a local liaison, such as the Emergency Management Director.
That's what it's written, that's what they're talking about.
So Bud, there's, there's also one that's required by charter, so are...
Too crowded in there, that's why I'm here, like, Julie.
Are you posing something just for the state mandated one?
Well, that's okay, I'll just pull it.
Who's talking?
I don't know.
Todd Rowland.
Oh, I'm not up yet.
I think it's Carl, if you want to mute his line.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Thanks. So Bud, I was saying, there... Thanks. So Bud, I was saying there, there appear to be two commissions. There's one that's state mandated that you can appoint someone to.
Right.
And then there's one that's required by charter. So which one are you proposing at appointment?
It's Carl, Carl, are you on?
I just muted him, hold on.
Hold on.
There he is, isn't it? Who is this?
Carl?
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, Carl.
Good evening.
How's everyone?
Good evening.
Tim Patricus has a question in regards to the Prison Liaison Committee, and we're referring to your letter of December the 26, 2018, where you indicate that this, this is a state agency.
Right.
Okay, and Tim is asking, is it in conflict?
My question, Bud, is, are there two agencies? Is there a state mandated one and one required under our town charter? Do we need two committees at this point?
I don't have your charter in front of me, so is, is it mentioned in the charter?
I don't think so.
Uh, it says in your letter that it is.
Okay.
It says Section 5-22 of the Charter allows the D O S to form an appointed board. Section was put in in 2006. There was establishment of committee in 2002, so it's not clear, so.
So, the charter doesn't specifically call out a prison liaison committee? That section, as I recall, is just authorization for the Board of Selectmen to, to establish any kind of border commission that they feel is appropriate.
So there was some sort of liaison committee established apparently in 2002, right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
But that may have not been in accompaniment with an ordinance to establish that commission? Is that what your letter's saying? I was a little confused by what I read.
You know, I, I, I can't really, I'm not prepared, you know, I wrote this two years ago and.
Yeah. No, because of that.
So, um, but I, I remember dealing with the subject, you know, a couple of years ago. It's really, it's mandated by statute, as I recall, right, for the.
For the state.
There's definitely a state mandated committee, right, so Bud certainly appoints somebody to that if he likes. He doesn't need our vote for that, apparently.
Correct.
Question is different than that. My question is, do we still need to appoint a prison liaison committee that was established sometime around 2002 under our charter, or not?
Based upon Carl's opinion, and I want to speak for him, apparently it was unclear. Is that correct, Carl?
It's very unclear.
I'm sorry, you're, you're catching me a little off guard. I didn't know this was going to be a topic, so.
No, no.
Oh, let's get back to you.
Does anyone, does anyone know whether this committee meets or does anything?
They do not.
They haven't met in over a year. In my opinion, it appears, based upon Carl's recommendation in his letter of 2018, that it's redundant, and that we have, we can't appoint a representative to meet on the state committee. But we're not required, from what I understand, to have our own special committee, Prison Liaison Committee.
Bud, it sounds like the people of the town may have wanted it 18 years ago. And the prison's been pretty quiet lately, but as I recall, 18 or 20 years ago, there were some issues between well water and access to records at the prison, what was going on, what wasn't. So apparent, I'm just gonna say from, from history, the, the town said they wanted a liaison committee started, and apparently the town set one up. I wouldn't want to disbar that without a little bit more research. So if you're proposing tonight that you want to appoint somebody to the state one, that's fine, but I'm not prepared to dissolve the one that we have today, whether they met in the last year or not. That's all.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the consideration of reappointing the existing five members, since they haven't met for over a year. And do we have any, any information that they want to be reappointed?
No, if anything, I think that's.
We've had people resign and.
Yeah, they don't seem to be in interest here. In fact, I've attended a number of these meetings, and really, it's not much that's been accomplished.
I'm just not so sure it's effective anymore.
Yeah, I mean, given the fact that we have this Everbridge hot beach, we have coordination with the police department, the state police, fire and ambulance, et cetera. This may be redundant, but again, from a legal standpoint, addressing temperature, this is common. We'll have Carl take another look at this. Carl, that was your letter of December 26, 2018.
I can send it to you, Carl.
If you can review that, and we can table this, and once we get your opinion.
Yeah, that's fine. We can table it.
Okay. To be perfectly frank with you, Tim, I'm not really sure, from an historical standpoint, why this thing was even set up. Okay, but we got into this, we started looking at it, we asked for Carl's.
I know neighbor, I know neighbor-to-neighbor relationships are better today than they were 20 years ago.
Right, that's certainly true.
So there may have been a reason that a committee was established. I know, Bud, you and Kathy and I went as a Board of Selectmen two years ago and toured the facility when the new warden was appointed at the state level.
Correct.
Those are all great things, and if, if the townspeople want a committee to make sure we maintain those relationships, then I'd like, I'd like to have that vehicle for people to serve if they want, and if they don't, I'm okay with abolishing it. I'm just not prepared to make that decision tonight.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, and I agree with you. I think things may have changed, there may have been.
How do you get that input, Tim, from the townspeople that they want to keep this going?
Uh, again, the way we do everything, Tim, you know, we can post it on Facebook, we can ask people questions, we can kind of take the pulse of the community. It's been so quiet, it's great. I would hate to not have an avenue to communicate with prison leadership if we need to do that at some point, so.
You're gonna probably have a local liaison appointed by the first selectman, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I would just like to hear from people that it's important to it. It's, they may be out there, and they may not know that this is even up for question, so.
Okay.
What we can probably do is look at the minutes from 2004, Tim. Is that when you believe it was originally formed, this, this town committee?
I'm, what's in your letter, Carl, and it says 2002, but I'm, I trust my memory, and that's always a dangerous thing.
As well as mine. But we can look at the minutes from, you know.
Yeah, I did. I have all that stuff, and I'll send that to you, Carl, um, so you can look at it, okay?
Carl, there was, there was two letters which I referenced. The one was December 26, 2018, from you. And the other one was August the 3, 2000, to Gordon Mello. Okay? So this thing, this thing's been kicking around for a while. We should get it resolved.
Yeah.
Okay?
I agree. But there was a reason for it, Bud. There was a reason.
I understand, Tim, and I'm not, I'm not finding fault with that. I think it's a good idea. If, in fact, it's something that's needed, we'll do that. But I don't want to make sure we're not in conflict with either state statute or, or own charter.
And to, to Satini's point, if it, if it is just the state liaison that gives us that communication, that's fine. I just want to make sure we don't break something that we need.
Yeah, okay. Not a problem. Okay, well, we'll reach out to Carl. Uh, the next page gentleman is page six, which would be. Need to reappoint.
Recreational Committee. Recreation Committee?
No, this would be the, there's a vacancy on the, oh, that's the prison committee, I'm sorry. Yes, the Recreation Committee. Reappointments for.
Seven members.
Stephen Wannick, Stephen Olick, Olicksec, Joe Radowitz, Jeffrey Jablonsky, Karen McQuain, and Scott Sutter, all up for reappointment.
If I might, I'd like to ask the Board to table this. For the time being, that committee hasn't met in over a year. And I'm not sure, frankly, the purpose of it, now that we have an operating Recreation Department since 2015. That's an advisory committee, and their role has decreased particularly over the last three years under the leadership of Chris Boucher. Now that we've filled the positions with Maureen coming on, I'd really like to give her an opportunity to get to know the players and know what's going on, take a heartbreak on whether we need a recreation committee. Because the, the only thing they do really is advise or refer to for every, I don't know, sports season. But even that, they don't have any direct input, and it's simply advisory nature.
I'll support, I'll support tabling that. That's what I, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. So Todd, have they been effective, in your opinion?
Uh, not recent, not in the last few years, no. They, they were much more active back when we didn't have the, the structure of the Recreation Department we have today, when it was under the senior center and was, not as much attention paid to it. Now that we have full-time staff doing all of those functions and liaising with the school and really managing all of our recreation needs, the commission has really stepped back, and they don't have a lot of input other than historical knowledge, frankly. The members that are on there have been on there for a long time. They have a lot of good historical knowledge, but we've kind of moved on as, as a community.
Okay, you and I will meet separately, Todd, and we'll discuss this along with Maureen, and then we'll get back to the Board with some recommendations, okay?
Thank you.
Of course, Carl's here. Reappoint Carl and his firm, Fahey and Delena Associates.
Recommend we reappoint Fahey, Landelina, and Associates as a town council. Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
My personal compliments to go to you, Carl, for your assistance, especially this past year and a half, which has been time-consuming and difficult. We appreciate your input.
Uh, you're certainly welcome. We, we enjoy serving the community.
Appreciate the low rates, too, Carl. Thank you.
Not like some attorneys that we know.
That's right.
But no, I, I again want to reiterate, Carl's been really instrumental in terms of some of the major legal issues we've dealt with, and his steady hand has been welcomed. And from a personal standpoint, I certainly appreciate it, despite the fact that his memory's slipping, but that's all.
Very true.
All right, Carl, thanks. We do have one vacancy on the W P C A. I reached out to Steve Jacobs. We still don't have any recommendations in that regard, so. Off the table of that. We need a reappointment for Jim Potellio as the chairman for the W P C A.
Make a motion that we reappoint Jim Potellio as chairman of the Water Push Control Authority. Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We also have two alternate vacancies, but again, we'll have to table that until we get some people willing to volunteer. Uh, the next item is zoning Board of Appeals. Joseph Marinaccio is up for reappointment.
Have you heard anything from him?
We have his father here, might be there.
I, I am, I'll see him tomorrow. I'm sure he'd be interested.
Of course.
Okay.
He really enjoys serving on that committee, right.
So we'll make the assumption that Joe would like to be reappointed.
I make a motion that we reappoint Joe Marinaccio for a four-year term on the zoning Board of Appeals.
And also, gentlemen, I forgot to mention, we have Andy Rocket, who's up for reappointment also.
And, and we're gonna include Andy Rocket in that same motion. Thank you. Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next commission is zoning Board of Appeals alternate. Ralph Williams has requested to be reappointed, along with Dan Thayer, B J Farrow III.
Have you heard anything from the other two members, Bud? B J Farrow and Dan Thayer?
I've heard back from Dan. I sent an email out to everybody.
Yeah, they're all in favor, Tim, of being reappointed.
You've heard from them? Okay, is that, is that true?
Yes, I sent out an email.
And you heard back from them?
I heard back from Dan Thayer, Ralph Williams, and I think maybe we, we had email problems. I don't know if B J got back to me, but I did get Dan's.
There's a question mark, but B J will reaffirm that.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we reappoint Dan Thayer, Ralph Williams, and B J Farrow to the zoning Board of Appeals. Second.
Additional discussion?
One year.
All in favor? Aye.
Bud?
Uh, the next commission is zoning commission. We have one reappointment. That would be Carl Walton. Carl's requested that he would, he'd like to serve.
Make a motion that we reappoint Carl Walton. I'll second that motion.
Any additional discussions? All in favor? Aye.
I'll abstain on the vote.
Okay. I vote affirmative. Tim votes affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll again reach out to the citizens and ask for additional volunteers. Again, if anybody listening to this live streaming wants to volunteer, we encourage you to do so for the good of the town. All ready?
What else?
Next item is the approval of minutes for December the 3, 2020.
Seems so long ago.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second the motion.
Additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item is the authorization of scheduled payments. Both you gentlemen received these. Any additional questions on those?
Make a motion that we approve authorized, that, we approve the authorization of scheduled payments for $251,217.
No, that's, that's not the correct number, Tim. It's $286,971.90.
So it's been amended?
I think so. It looks that way. It's 12.
I updated 1229 with that number on it, Tim. Did you get that update from Brian?
Yeah, I sent it yesterday.
I'm sorry.
I didn't, yeah, okay, go ahead.
All right, we vote on this?
Um, just one, one more question before we go to vote, Bud. To, to Mike and Brian, is there anything on the horizon that would let us know how these payments relate to the budget? Because I, you know, every once in a while, I'll go through it, and I'm never sure how we're doing to the line items of the budget. You know, there's, there's a charge to, you know, there's, there's mountain tree service on here for a large amount, so I'm, I'm assuming they did some work for us, but I don't know where that went, right? So is there any way that we can eventually tie thisables list to the accounts that we've approved in the budget, so we know, are we close? Are we over? Are we under?
Um, I was gonna give you guys a mid-year budget update, um, with one of your early January meetings. Our software doesn't necessarily, it won't take that report and separate it by line item, so there's no way to say, like, oh, okay, in public works, we spent X amount of dollars and so forth. But, yeah, I, I plan on getting you guys a, a mid-year budget update before we start kicking off the fiscal '22 budget meetings.
That's a good point, because in the past, we've approved legal fees that are well beyond the budgeted amount.
Yeah, is it, is it hard to do that quarterly, Brian?
What's that, Tim?
Would it be hard to do that quarterly, an update quarterly instead of twice a year?
No, I did it quarterly. I did a first quarter, now we're hitting the second quarter. Did the first quarter back in May, October.
I forgot, okay.
Another, another problem.
And you're blaming Carl about his memory.
Oh, no, I said mine, too. All right, thanks. As long, just as long as we can get some visibility, because there's a.
Yeah, no, that's not a problem.
And I don't, I don't dispute the, the dollars spent, but I just want to make sure, um, you know, with all the weirdness going on with what we're spending on COVID and first responders and all the other stuff going on, you know, it's a little hard to, a little hard to balance once in a while, so.
Yeah, we, we keep a running total, all the totals, correct, Brian and Mike, in terms of where we are in terms of the budget, so we pretty much.
Oh, absolutely.
So we pretty much know, but breaking it down by item, you already addressed that, okay.
Oh, I don't, I don't need it, I don't need it by item. I would just like to know, how are we doing with the line items that we agreed to on the budget?
Right.
Yep.
You say, we know, but I don't know, so.
A lot of sense to me.
Yep, no, not a problem. I'll get you guys that. Um, if not at the first January meeting, definitely at the second January meeting, I'll get you guys all that information, because I'm gonna have some, some COVID-related updates for you as well. I just have to put everything together.
Great, I appreciate that. Thanks, Brian.
Okay, did we, did we vote on the $286,971.90?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all in favor? Aye. Uh, I'm gonna sign this, gentlemen, with your approval.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into executive session. You still with us, Carl? Carl?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, we need also, Mike, you can stay on, and Walter.
Let me just get off of this.
Walter on the phone.
Yeah, I believe so.